I'll call the meeting to order for the 16 April meeting of the Manhattan City Commission. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you all rise and follow me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have three proclamations tonight, and we're going to start with Volunteer Week. And Lori and this great group represent what's great about Manhattan. I mean, I said this afternoon at the Chamber of Commerce, we just couldn't do what we need to do in this city and take care of people without these kinds of organizations. And these organizations just don't work by themselves. They take a tremendous amount of internal energy and organization to make them come together and then outreach to people. So, we're very proud to have them here. So, I'll ask a city clerk to read the proclamation, then we'll hand it out.
Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet challenges. Whereas volunteers with the Flint Hills Volunteer Center address critical community needs in Manhattan and the surrounding area. Whereas all over the nation, service projects are performed and volunteers recognized for their commitment to service. Whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. Whereas volunteers are vital to our future as a caring and productive nation and community. Now therefore, Michael Dodson, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, proclaims National Volunteer Week in the City of Manhattan and urges citizens to volunteer in one of our many local community organizations.
Let's give him a round of applause.
Thank you. Again, I'm Nathan Bergman, President of the Flint Hills Volunteer Center Board. And with me tonight, I've got several board members and several of our volunteers, and of course Lori Bishop, our Executive Director. Again, I want to thank you for recognizing our volunteers and the work that we do in the community. This year marks the 45th anniversary of our Senior Core RCP Program. We are thankful to be a part of helping our community meet very critical needs. Last year, we had 800 volunteers recording 34,000 hours of volunteer service. That's equivalent to over 16 full-time employees. So, I feel like we really do provide a lot of value to the community in what we do. And again, I want to thank all of our volunteers, our sponsors in the community, several of which are here tonight for various activities, and for Lori and her staff. So, thank you.
Well, it's also Poppy Day. So, for those of you that know, this goes back a long time, back into World War I, a famous poem that was written about it, and was promulgated throughout the years and the decades. And we're very proud to be able to represent those people who have given their all in service of their country. And we'd ask Ellie and Hannah and Susan to come forward. Anybody else associated with the group is fine. You're going to hand some of those out, I think, aren't you? Oh, okay. Good for you. You can probably get more money. Oh, thanks.
Thank you.
You do?
Yeah, you're going to read the proclamation first.
Yeah, we'll read the proclamation, then you can speak, all right? I'll have to lower this microphone.
Whereas the VFW adopted the Poppy as its official memorial flower in 1922. Whereas America is a land of freedom preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers and the millions who have answered the call to arms that have died on the field of battle. Whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remind America annually of this debt through the distribution of the memorial flower. Whereas donations for these artificial poppies have helped countless veterans and their widows, widowers, and orphans over the years. Now therefore, Michael L. Dodson, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, proclaims May 4, 2019 as Poppy Day, and asks that all citizens pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing the memorial poppy on this day.
Go ahead.
Stand up close and speak up.
Hello, my name is Ellie Thayer. I'm the daughter of Austin and Hannah Thayer of Manhattan. My grandfather, Robert Steiner, is an Army veteran. And grandfather Austin Thayer served in the Navy, Army, and retired from the Air Force. I'm honored to be the 2019 Poppy Princess for the American Legion Post-17 Auxiliary, as we pay tribute to all veterans. Let me tell you the history of the poppy. The wild poppy which grew on the battlefields of France and Flanders was the one touch of beauty that survived the terrible Battle of the First World War. The poppy kept growing despite the bombing of the landscape on which it grew. And its bright red color was a sign of hope for those who survived. Soldiers of all nations began to regard the poppy as a living symbol of the sacrifices that were made by their fellow soldiers who served and died in all wars. Today, the poppy provides a way to honor the fallen soldiers by giving service to the living victims of the war. It gives honor to those who passed and provides help and hope to living veterans. Did you know that more than 25 million poppies are made by disabled veterans each year? Making poppies is a blessing to the veterans. It allows them to earn money and gives them something to do and something to think about. It helps pass the time in a positive and meaningful way. There is no price to accept a poppy, however, all donations are gratefully accepted. The memorial poppies are distributed by American Legion volunteers each Poppy Day. And contributions received are focused entirely to rehab for veterans and assistance for their families. I would now like to pass out poppies tonight to honor all veterans. Thank you.
Well, Robyn and Stan and Ann, please come forward. We want to recognize Mental Health Month. And I think, as most people know, this has been a long identified issue. And there are a lot of dedicated people in the City of Manhattan and the County of Riley who've taken this on, to include some of the commissioners still serving here. Been a unified effort. A lot of work has gone forward, not only by Robyn and her staff, but by others who have spent a lot of time with our legislative leaders trying to make sure that mental health is a top priority for the state of Kansas. Just by the way, and Robyn will probably say this again, but we're having a ribbon cutting for the new facility, the rebuilt facility, at 10:30 on Thursday morning. So hopefully a lot of you can come out and show support for this facility that will serve several counties in addition to our county. So, please publish the proclamation.
Whereas, mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. Whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. Whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shares the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support preventive efforts. Now therefore, Michael L. Dodson, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, proclaims May 2019 as Mental Health Month.
Pawnee Mental Health Services first served Manhattan and Riley County in 1956 as the Riley County Mental Health Center. At that time, we had one therapist serving one county. He provided services to 97 people. This last year, we served 10 counties, over 7,500 people with 240 staff. And so, things have really changed over the last nearly 63 years. As the mayor indicated, we have a special event happening on Thursday. It really is the result of community efforts that have gone on for several years now. And it was made possible by a grant of $725,000 from the state of Kansas for Pawnee Mental Health here in the City of Manhattan to open up a crisis stabilization service which will provide 24-hour crisis care to individuals who are experiencing a mental health or a substance use crisis. I think it is not, I'm not underestimating the influence of members of this city commission, and also the staff of the city who were so instrumental in helping us pull together a team, in taking a look at the issues, and just providing resources for Pawnee Mental Health as we pushed through the process and were successful in achieving that grant award. And so, I, along with the mayor, would invite the whole community to come out to the groundbreaking on Thursday. It'll be a very good time of celebration, and we really look forward to years to come for serving this community.
Looks like she's doing a good job collecting there. We'll now move to Item 3, which are Commissioner comments. So, let Linda start.
I just have one announcement. I'd just like to make sure the community is aware that the Flint Hills Regional Council that encompasses seven counties here in the Flint Hills is hosting an annual regional conference in Junction City at the Marriott, which is called the Geary County Convention Center, on April 24. The speakers will be the Lieutenant Governor Lynn Rogers, Secretary of Transportation Julie Lorenz, Executive Director of Fort Campbell's Strong Defense Alliance Rory Mallory and others. It will start at 8:30, last all day, and lunch is provided with the registration. Anybody would like, would be interested could get in touch with me. It's a good opportunity for these communities that participate to collaborate and get to know each other better so we can figure out how to work better together. We're stronger together. Thank you.
I just wanted to say a quick thank you to everybody who came out to celebrate the Little Apple Pride event this weekend, and congratulate that committee for putting on such a good event. This was their 10th annual one, and it was by far the biggest. There was at least 1,000 people there. There were a lot of people there for the parade and the event afterwards. So, I just wanted to thank everybody for being part of that and making it a great event.
Yeah. Thanks, Jared, for saying that. I was going to say that as one of my points too, but I won't now. I did want to say about the Stabilization Center, you know, that took us many years. It was in the process even before I came onto the City Commission, but it's so nice to see it coming to fruition. It's been through so many iterations, and so many people were involved, and there was disappointments, and we just thought it would never happen. And hopefully, this is the in-between when an individual with a mental illness issue has conflict with the law or any of that sort. Jail, and this would be the middle part where they can just have some resources provided, and then Osawatomi. So, now we have a three or four-pronged system before they end up there. So, this is one of those preventive measures. And I'm very thankful that the state also thought it was a priority and decided to fund it. So, this is one of those things that benefits everybody involved.
Just a couple of things. We're having a meeting here Thursday night at 6:30. Linda, are you on the committee too?
I'm not.
For the Resiliency Committee, this is a committee that's looking at Wildcat Creek and flooding and advancing us on that to do a discussion of modeling, as well as some other things that we might be able to do to mitigate flooding. So, if you're interested in that, certainly welcome to come. It'll be in this room, 6:30 Thursday night. Done a couple of things with the Law Board. We had just a recent meeting, and we're right in the middle of formulating budget. And I think, as everybody knows, the personnel part of budgets for the RCPD, as well as the city and the county and many other organizations, is predominantly in personnel. So, on the RCPD, it's 85% of the budget. In the city, I think it's 73 or 74%. And very similar in the county. So, those are the things we're having to struggle with. We want to make sure that we retain all of our great people who do work for us. So, it's, there's a balance to be struck, and it's a lot of hard work between then and now. So, on the RCPD, we've got to lock in that, the highest budget that we cannot go over on the 10th of May. And so, our new director and his staff are working on that, along with the Law Board. I think we're making some good progress. And as you know, we've just started the budget process on the city side. And we have a similar timetable. We have to lock in a little bit later on that. But, and then, as I think most of you know, one of the challenges that we have this summertime is road construction and kind of healing from the difficult season we had. So, we'd ask your indulgence as you look around the city. And Vivian on our staff does a great job of sending out information on the Insider that shows you where all these construction projects are. And if Ron sends a monthly report out so you can see not only streets, but you can see water and sewer and stormwater and all of those where those projects, whether they're in planning, whether they're in bid, or whether they're actually out for execution. If you can see the numbers in there, you'll see how busy the city is in trying to keep up with things and in fact, stay ahead of things so we don't get into a problem with undue maintenance. But, there are a couple this summer that I'd like to point out. One is, well, they're both major projects. One is on Kimball Avenue between Hudson and Vanessa. So, those of you that live out there, they've done a lot of planning on how you get in and around there, but it'll be very tough all summertime. Try to get that wrapped up before school starts because that causes several other issues. And the balance here is how fast you can get it done versus public inconvenience. And the faster you try to get it done, the higher the price goes because most of the people that do this kind of work are already just about full. So, if you try to get them to work faster, it's going to cost us more money. So, I just ask for your perseverance on that. The other one is on North Manhattan Avenue. As you know, we've got a new entry to American Institute of Baking, and to move that driveway further north, and shave off some of that hill, and then fix that intersection for the future development on the west side of the highway. So, those are two big things that attract a lot of traffic. Arguably, in some of those cases, we'll be doubling traffic on some of our thoroughfare. So, you'll get Seth Childs, or maybe Anderson Avenue has ways to get around, maybe Hudson Avenue to get you Marlat, to get you around those construction zones. Just ask that everybody be careful, because we've got a lot of traffic that's ordinarily not there. But, we've got guys that planned this real well, so we have good signage and detour signs and everything up. You want to say something about what we're going to do with Brian McNulty?
Sure. This Thursday at 4 o'clock, the City-County-County meeting, the City Commission meets with Riley County Commissioners and Potawatomi County Commissioners. And Brian McNulty, who heads the Corps of Engineers out of Tittle Creek Reservoir, will be giving a presentation to, at that particular meeting, just to talk about the status of the reservoir and some of the protocols and procedures that the Corps has. Obviously, the Corps is about half of its capacity for flood pool. And this is early in the year to be saying that, given the situations with flood melt on the Missouri and the Mississippi. So, we have an awareness. The city put out a news release Friday. Actually, it was multiple agencies that put a joint release out Friday that just wanted to increase awareness of different aspects and something that emergency services folks will be continuing to monitor situations and do a lot of pre-planning. And hopefully, that'll be just an exercise and we won't have to execute it. So, just stay tuned. Our group internally in the Emergency Services Group is meeting weekly and monitoring that situation. But, that might be good information for you to be aware of. And we'll try and get a copy of that presentation and post it on our website as well.
Thank you. We'll now move to Item 4, which is the Consent Agenda. I think, as everyone knows, these are items that have been previously considered, or items that are considered a housekeeping in nature. And for any of these items, Commissioner wishes they can move this to the general agenda, and it will fall at the end of the agenda. So, ask for any discussion on the consent agenda.
Ron, I just wanted to ask if on K, Item K, if you could expand on why we're doing that a little bit?
Sure. The Item K is a permit to take on some of the mowing responsibilities for KDOT, and do it on a little more regular basis than KDOT does. This is specifically along the Seth Child corridor. It will involve doing some partial mowing on a more regular basis than the periodicity that KDOT does. It's really to try and keep those areas looking better and keeping trash and other aspects picked up. It was a goal of the Commission to do some of these enhancements. And the contract is in the amount of $15,336 for the season that we'll be doing.
One question I have related to that, since you said more frequently, I mean, over the years, has it become less frequent that they've been doing that?
I would say that...
Has this been an ever-present issue, or just since the state of Kansas started to lose money?
It's been pretty consistent that they just, I mean, it's more of a rural approach to mowing, even though we're in an urban area. But, I would say maybe the frequency's been off a little bit, but not a lot. They have a different philosophy of that right-of-way maintenance compared to what we might have in an urban setting. And so, they don't adopt a different standard from their mowing practices. They try and do it a few times a year, where we would like to see that more often.
Okay, thank you.
Last two years, they've only done it twice.
Yeah, I think that was the answer I was expecting to hear a little bit. It's just, it seems to me, and I thought the reason why we were doing this is kind of seemed like KDOT wasn't doing it, and that's why we were doing it. And I just, I want people to know that our taxpayers in Manhattan, that that's yet one more cost that usually the state would take on that we are being passed on this level.
Those really get ugly, as you know, in the middle of the summertime.
Yeah, yeah.
But isn't the funding for that special street and highway anyway, so indirectly the states go paying for it?
Well, that's what we're proposing to utilize as special street and highway funds for that right-of-way maintenance aspect. And Eddie, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but you know, our, the state has generally mowed the whole right-of-way, you know, periodically, a couple times a year. And so, this will be supplementing that and trimming a little bit more often on the edges.
Thank you.
Yep. Any further discussion on a consent agenda item? Not entertain a motion to approve? Any public comment on the consent agenda? Thank you for... Anyone wishing to comment, please come forward. Glad to hear from you. Okay, if not, no public comment. We'll come back to entertaining a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mayor Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
And Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
I'm going to move to Part 5, which is the General Agenda. And Item A, consider a first reading of an ordinance rezoning 1100, 1106 Blument Avenue and Number 11th Street to PUD residential planned unit development, and amending ordinance number 7204 of the 12th and Blument Lofts PUD and approve final development plan to allow for a new apartment building. And Ben, you'll be presenting all by yourself?
That's right.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Ben Schmeele. I'm a planner for the City of Manhattan. Tonight, we'll be looking at, like Mayor Dodson said, an amendment to an existing PUD and a rezoning just north of Aggieville. So, this is the area. It's the 1100, the north side of the 1100 block of Blument Avenue. This is the existing PUD that we will be amending in order to apply it to the eastern half of the block where that PUD will be applied to. So, that's the rezoning aspect of it. The existing PUD was approved back in 2017. It's called the 12th and Blument Lofts PUD. It's a 37-unit, four-story apartment complex there, adopted via ordinance 7295. So, the proposal is to develop the site to the east of this, which consists of 1106 Blument, 1100 Blument, and 809 North 11th Street. These two are single-family homes that are currently vacant. And this is a 12-unit apartment complex between those single-family homes and the existing development. So, the amendment and rezoning would allow for a 51-foot-tall, four-story, 33-unit addition to be constructed. We're calling it a sister building because it's connected to the existing 12th and Blument Lofts via a breezeway above the ground floor. This is what it would look like from 11th and Blument Avenue looking northwest. And this is what it would look like from kind of the alley looking southeast. So, you can see that the parking is sort of built underneath the structure and screened by habitable uses along the ground floor and pretty good screening along 11th as well. So, this is what that looks like from a site plan perspective. We've got the existing PUD with the 37 units and 77 parking spaces behind the building. The new building would utilize a similar system with parking kind of tucked underneath the building. With the 33 units added to this building via this connection here, 52 parking spaces would also be added. So, this would be a total of 70 units with 172 bedrooms and 129 parking spaces, which shakes out to 3/4 of the space per bedroom for a parking ratio, which matches the urban core residential zoning district that we have just to the north of this development. This was about the same ratio that existed for, that exists now for the 12th and Blument development. They also provided some bike parking at a ratio of two spaces, or sorry, one space for every two bedrooms. They also provided some bike parking at a ratio of two spaces, or sorry, one space for every two bedrooms. This is the landscaping plan. It's a fairly urban development, so there's not a lot of room for landscaping. But they've done a pretty nice job of proposing some foundation plantings along Blument and 11th especially. They'll be keeping a shade tree or an existing mature tree in the right-of-way on 11th and planting a new shade tree kind of in the parking lot area. So as far as the comprehensive plan goes, the future land use map shows this area as central core district, which is associated with the greater Aggieville area and all of the land uses and development types that go with it. In more detail, though, this area is covered in the Aggieville Community Vision Plan. It is in the Blument Anderson Corridor, which according to the plan is to be developed, redeveloped into a more urban and pedestrian-oriented corridor with buildings up to five stories tall, fronting the street, parking in back, things of that nature. This development hits almost every one of those goals that we have for this corridor as laid out in that plan, as you can see by the list of things here. This would be a gateway building into the district, which makes it pretty special for Aggieville as it would be kind of the first thing you see driving westbound on, on Blument Avenue while heading toward Aggieville. So it would be a pretty prominent building that would sort of complete one half of the gateway into the district. So as far as the amendment and rezoning goes, staff has assessed that it is appropriate for the site and is in substantial compliance with all of our zoning regulations and to do with PUD amendments and rezonings. Furthermore, it has a very high degree of conformance with our comprehensive plan and especially the Aggieville Community Vision Plan for this area. This was brought to the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board on April 1st and they recommended approval unanimously in conformance with staff recommendation. So you have a possible motion in your packet tonight to approve first reading of the ordinance to rezone the area and make the amendments to the existing PUD. Are there any questions for me?
Yeah, I have a question about the Aggieville business, Aggieville Community Vision and maybe that urban core vision. Anywhere in that document, I looked through it and I couldn't find it, but I want to make sure I'm not missing it. There's a lot of references to mixed use, but is there references to like, in terms of the residential that we're building in that area, trying to ensure in some way mixed pricing? Like making sure there is a scale of affordability, I guess?
Yeah, the, the plan talks about that in a less direct way. It talks to allowing a mixture of housing types that more naturally result in, in more affordability throughout the area. This is not necessarily, like Aggieville proper isn't, isn't necessarily where we see that happening due to more of an urban environment that's focused on commercial retail and things like that. But the plan does talk to high-density residential along this corridor in a mixed-use setting. But we also recognize that residential is probably more likely on the north side of this corridor especially. But that additional housing component is going to come from more of the periphery of Aggieville in the zoning districts known as the M-FRO and the urban core.
Maybe the, I don't have a problem with this project necessarily, maybe the developer could speak more on this. But I guess I was just curious, because as these come before us and future commissions kind of one by one, if they're all kind of apartment complexes or residential housing that may be set on the more higher end of the market, how do we ensure that long-term goal? Because we're going to kind of see these one at a time. So I was, it's probably a discussion outside of this one topic, but I was just curious if there is a mention of that anywhere in any of either of those visions, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, my question had to do with the alley. Are we, is the, will the paving of the alley be a factor here at all too?
I believe the alley is...
Already paved?
I don't know. Brian, do you, do you know?
It's not paved currently. In fact, it's in extremely poor condition.
Yeah. Are we going to be requiring some attention to... Will the developer be participating in paving the alley like we would have a development in a new area? The developer would be a participant in helping to pay, at least in the beginning, for the...
Throughout the Infra District, we haven't required developers to pay for those alleys at the Blument Hotel. That developer did.
Yeah.
He formed a district and he paid for it out of his pocket. We haven't done that in the past. This would be a new policy to create.
I think we have, we talked about that, Ron. And I guess I thought we were doing something when we were doing this Aggieville vision and guidelines. Seems to me that it's part of the responsibility of the development that will be using that alley intensely to make a contribution toward the streets and the surrounding area. So I would like to see the city move forward with something like that. And that we, doesn't mean we can do it on this one, but you know, we have a long list of alleys we have to pay.
Absolutely.
And it shouldn't be our burden when we have new construction.
So we did have quite a bit of discussion and you, we gave you analysis of the... We gave the commission analysis of different aspects of currently paved and those that we're wanting. The more, most recent one we've done was a, formed a benefit district. I think we formed it by public hearing.
By public hearing, yes.
Because there wasn't a majority of folks that, that wanted to participate. Ben, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the access of, to this facility is actually off of 12th Street.
That's correct.
And it's not off the alley.
Yeah, yes.
And they actually have a wall next to the alley. So you can't use, but I understand what you're saying, Commissioner.
You have a...
Be a cold day before I vote to pave this alley.
You have a chart, Brian. It may be hard to find in a short period of time, but remember?
Yes.
We looked up north of Blument, we had some red...
Yep. We have ranked all of those alleys, 1, 2, 30, which ones are first on the list or in the poorest condition. And those alleys that were in the poorest condition last year, the commission formed a public hearing benefit district and forced those. This one is not, you know, even in the top 10 of that list. Eric just found it. I can find it and drop it on the X drive or K drive and Ben can pull it up.
Yeah, so I watched the, the meeting, the planning board meeting. And there was a lot of good questions asked at that time too. So one of the things was the detention system underground. And there was a lot of discussion about that area and how that water would be released or how it would maybe not, not about stopping flooding, but kind of slowing it down a little bit. Is that correct? That that's, that's the purpose of the detention underground?
So, yes. The idea is that there's a permeable pavement up here that would be able to collect and pull that stormwater into the system where it would be detained. And eventually, if it were full enough, would, would go into our, our stormwater system. The, the question that was brought up at the planning board is probably part of a bigger discussion that maybe Brian and our friends in public work can, can be able to answer. Just in terms of the, the idea of how do we treat drainage in this area where water is, is already in the, in the basin of, of, of our system? Should we just discharge it immediately, get it out of the way, or hold it on-site?
Right.
So maybe Brian can speak to that.
I was just going to pull up your map.
This is a system like we used at Genesis, is that right?
Absolutely. Genesis, we used it on his first development. Kansas Department of Ag has used it. They're proposing to use it again and NBAF has used it and the high schools used it.
And it works well. Everything there was...
Absolutely.
What kind of material? There was talk about the material that was being used also, I think.
It's a plastic, looks kind of like a doghouse. They look like doghouses and they assemble together and they've got a rock base. Water comes into there, fills up so high and then percolates out.
What is it? I don't know. Were you trying to find something for my question or something for...
For Mayor Dodson's question. There's your alley ranking. Yellows were the worst.
We do have a policy on our alleys and the ward districts as well. I can pull that up. But it, it goes through a lot of criteria and how we're going to assess properties on either side of the alley. We adopted that in April of 17.
A lot of trucks go on those, not just the cars. There's a lot of heavy trucks that go behind each of those alleys.
It was really a breakdown of how we were going to approach paying for them. And I think Brian's accurate. We weren't scrapping this with the developer as they come adjacent to the alley. It is more of a breakdown on how you're going to address single-family, multifamily, apartment complexes and how they're going, going to be assessed along that alley. But it was always a benefit district approach and then looking at an equitable way to assign them.
What is item B referring to? Scroll up what you were just on. That one, section one right there.
That's talking about the commission forcing a public hearing benefit district. And if you did, how we would assess each individual property. The more, the denser the units, the more they would pay.
Go ahead. But in the case of this particular property, the parking is not going to be using that alley, right?
You're correct.
They're coming in for different ways.
You're correct.
So it's not going to increase traffic on the alley. It's not going to decrease traffic on the alley. So to me, it's not relevant to the discussion tonight.
We specifically had them put that wall in there so that they couldn't access the alley.
And this is about addressing deteriorating alleys and how we're going to pay for them.
And this one has been stated that it's in really poor shape. So it would, it would go to the end of the priorities that we've had on our list since 2017, rather than working its way to the top of alleys to be fixed.
Well, on the map, it was identified as fair condition. I was in that alley just maybe two months ago and fair might be an overstatement, but I don't know that I would call any alleys down there good.
I understand. I'm just saying, I don't want the city to be so nice that we pave alleys for people.
We haven't in the past.
I know, and I want a policy change on that. That's what I'm talking about.
We have not in the past.
Huh?
We have not in the past.
We have not.
We have not.
Our 2017 policy wouldn't allow for it either.
To allow for a benefit district.
He would allow for a benefit district. We don't have a cost share on that. That's 100% adjoining properties.
I understand what you're saying. I don't want to pay for it.
I don't either.
That's all I'm saying.
So, yeah, so there was another, there were another dialogue piece was the parking spaces. And the explanation was adequate, so I, I trust that there are fewer, students are coming with fewer vehicles and they might be walking around there. But he also said that he charges for his parking spots permits. And I think he said $150 and they're all sold, even though not everybody's parking there. All the students, or I'm assuming it's students, but it could be young professionals. And then he increased it to 200 and those are also sold out, right? Isn't that what he mentioned?
I believe that's what he said, yeah.
Yeah, so it seems like people want that parking spot and they're willing to pay for it. And even those $200 annually, those parking spots are taken. And he doesn't seem to be having any issues, was my understanding. So at first I thought maybe, because there were fewer parking spots as opposed to the number of rooms and how much we typically allow. Where does the UDO fall into all of this? Are we, is the UDO going to make changes by the time it comes around to us? With something like this kind, this, this is very different than what we had in the past.
Yeah, so the, this, this would be a planned unit development, which would be preserved throughout the UDO process. We, we have tons of planned unit developments all around town. Those would not change through, through that process. The UDO would hopefully give us more options in terms of buy-right districts so that we wouldn't have to do PUDs in general. The, we were hoping to apply the, the C3 zoning district to this area, but we hadn't amended the, those, that district before this had, had come before us. So ideally, they would have come to us and we would have rezoned this to the Aggieville zoning district, which would allow them to go up to five stories and do all of this, all of this stuff that they want to do. They started that process well before we initiated those text changes, so.
So this would be kind of like grandfathered in? Is that, or it would just fit into what UDO was going to do anyway as far as the zoning?
Yeah, it, it would, it would carry forward. It would still be looked at as a customized zoning district. That, that would be preserved through the UDO.
Yeah. I don't have any issues with the proposal as it's presented. It looks kind of awkward in a way because it's just so, so massive in that area. But also we're looking for the density component in that area as well. And then at a time when we have fewer students, it's interesting that they want to build more apartments. But then again, I'm assuming it's going to be for students, but it looks like it might be more for young professionals or, or others that are moving into that high-density area, even though we have a lot of apartments available. But everything else looks okay.
Yeah, maybe just a couple of comments. I appreciate having this sister building on this street. It's going to make a great addition to, if you will, the entry point to Aggieville and Manhattan. And also appreciate, I just might point out that when you're looking for green space in a rather urbanized area, they've left five feet between the building front. You can see those little patches of grass out to the sidewalk. And you've got a seven-foot sidewalk and then 11 feet out to the curb. So a reasonable amount of green space to get out of that amount of setback. So I think it'd be an attractive-looking addition. So at this point, let me call for any public comment on item A. Anyone wishes to comment, please come forward, love to hear from you.
Hi Commissioners, my name is TJ Vilkanskas, representing both Back Nine Development and 12th and Blument LLC at 3417 Vanessa. I am the developer of the project. I thought I'd just come forward and address a few of the questions. And please remind me if I'm missing anything. You know, Brian and I have discussed the water detention thing numerous times. The, the city policy states that when you get over a half acre, you have to add water detention. In this situation, we're .02 acres over that and it will cost me an extra $50,000 to $75,000 to put in the water detention. As Commissioner McKee commented on, trying to keep the cost of living down. You know, my concern is when we start adding those types of costs to the construction, it increases what we have to charge to be able to get the money back out of the project. So it's really not something to address now, but I would ask that it be looked at in the future. To the best of my knowledge and visiting with a few different engineers, there's not a lot of data out there that shows that it is really providing a great service detaining the water. In most situations, when we get a lot of water in an area, we want that water the heck out of there, you know? But I'm certainly not an expert in that area. All I know is kind of the dollars and cents behind it. You know, we were looking at another site also and it's similar, .52 acres, going to be the exact same thing. We're not really changing any zoning or replating anything there. But because it's that .02 acres over, which is going to be a very customary size lot for some of the type of buildings that are in the existing code, it's going to require that extra $50,000 to $75,000 to put in basically a big tank that holds water for a little bit and then releases it out. So maybe something that we want to look at in the future if we are really concerned with, you know, where our cost is getting as far as the living goes. To comment on the parking. Yes, we do charge for parking spots there. We charge... We charge, we have 80 spots currently and 105 bedrooms. We have sold 105 spots, so we've oversold the parking lot. I have been taking pictures at numerous times of the day, just in case the conversation came up. The majority of the time, we are 50 to 60% full. Sometimes we get up to 75 to 80% full. At no time over the past month have I seen the parking lot completely full. We do have a gate there that we use to maintain who gets to park there and who doesn't. We shut that for events like Fake Patty's Day, which would have been the only parking issue we've ever had so far, in-home football games, basketball games, and things such as that. So I don't think it's a matter of students not having cars, but I just think it's a matter of with that many people having to have their cars there all at one time and not really providing a spot, you know, for, for guest parking. I think that that is ample parking. That's another one of those items as we start to look at, how do we make more affordable living? Something that happens is, you know, a big chunk of, you know, we can go up to five stories here, but I, I physically can't because of the amount of parking that were required. If we were to go underground or if we were to do podium parking, you change the type of construction, you're going to a steel frame building, other things, and all that's doing is once again, it's increasing the cost, making it, you know, a project that's really hard to, to make work. So those are a couple of the items just that I wanted to address and also say that, you know, something to, to look at in the future is that water detention and the parking. I know in many urban areas, they're, they're continually downsizing the parking and the city is always outstanding to work with, and I know they're looking at some solutions there too. So hopefully we'll come up with something from that perspective. But were there any other questions that I can address or while I'm up here?
Am I allowed to ask him a question? He's a developer. I just want to make, well, there's so many rules around this zoning stuff, I want to make sure. If you don't want to answer this, it's okay. But I, genuinely, 12B apartments are beautiful. They're, they're, adds vibrancy to the area. If you wanted to have that cost for the detention pond, would you have, would it have lowered the cost of the apartments or would you've been, would you have charged at the same rate? Because these are kind of a different scale, in my, at least in my opinion, and you correct me if I'm wrong, than what I see around town. You, you seem to be going after a different set of populations than maybe what the average apartment complex. So if that detention pond wasn't there, would your cost really be lower? Well, your cost would, but would your rent be lower?
Our cost would absolutely be lower. I, I'm afforded the luxury in the way we built them and the type of clients that we have in those buildings that I can charge the rent. If I wanted to try to make affordable living, that, that plays a big factor in it. And more so not, 12B is a bigger site, right? And now we're expanding 12B with this building. But if you look at 11B as a standalone site, that's only 22,500 square feet, and if that was a standalone building, that $50,000 to $75,000 there is a significant portion of that, of that cost. And that could make a difference on whether or not the project even gets done. And so, and, and where 11B sits right now, we just bought this last year two houses. Those houses sit empty because of so many code issues that they cannot be occupied. So in an area that has houses that are dilapidated or whatever the terminology is, houses that need to be torn down or renovated or whatever, that can be a cost prohibitive action to where we can't afford to go in and do some of the redevelopment that needs to happen in those situations. So I don't know if I'm kind of talking in circles around your original question, but I guess to the best of my ability, that's how I was getting into that.
That's a fine answer. Thank you.
All right, well, thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public who wishes to speak? All right, we'll come back to the commission. Any further comments on this issue? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve first reading of an ordinance rezoning 1100 and 1106 Bluemont Avenue and 809 North 11th Street lots 627, 628, and 629 Ward 3. 2.52-acre site generally located on the northwest of North 11th Street and Bluemont Avenue to 12th and Bluemont Lofts planned unit development and amending ordinance to 7295 for the 12th and Bluemont Lots PUD based on the findings in the staff report with 11 conditions of approval and the recommendation of the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board.
I second the motion.
Let's call the roll. Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Dodson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Now come to item B, which is to consider the first reading of an ordinance annexing and rezoning Blueville Edition Unit 2 from Riley County AG, that is Agriculture District, and C5 Highway Service Commercial District to C2 Neighborhood Shopping District and C5 Highway Service Commercial District. And, it's not Chad.
No.
I know it's, yeah. So John.
Good evening, Mayor.
Before you start, let me ask a question. We have both zoning and annexing in here. Do we have to have two separate votes on this or can we do it all in one?
They've set it up as two.
Yeah.
We did? Okay.
It's set on the memo. Yeah.
You can hold it as one item, but they do need to do two separate votes. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. John Adams, Senior Planner. This annexation and rezoning consideration is on the far west side of the city at Anderson Avenue, straddling both sides of Scenic Drive. The annexation is Lot 2 of a subdivision that was done several years ago called Blueville Edition Unit 1. It is the second lot of that. The rezoning encompasses a larger area because it goes across the street to land that's also part of the Blueville ownership. And then the rezoning, you can see here, are the two actions that are up for tonight. One, let me back up just a slide. The C5 is already existing. There is a slight jog to that existing boundary because it's matching up with the lot lines in the associated Blueville Edition Unit 2 that's going along with this. It was already approved by the planning board. And then the remainder of it is going to C2, so 9.7 acres of C5 and 17.6 of C2. This is an excerpt from the future land use map of the city's comprehensive plan. The plan indicates that this area is appropriate for neighborhood commercial zoning. Also down, down in this corner of this area is parks and open space designation due to the proximity to the floodplain. That's an, the boundary you see there is a straight line that's diagonal. To me, that indicates that's just an arbitrary line. It should be somewhere on there. And in fact, the reason for that is because there's floodplain encroachment across that property down there, but they designed it in such a way that they have accounted for that. There's a very slight bit of Lot 8 that is touched by it, but Tracts A and B are the ones that are most impacted. Tract A is going to be used for a stormwater detention, and Tract B is going to be left as natural area untouched. So there won't be any structures that would be affected by the mapped floodplain. Turning to the analysis and the findings of the planning board, the area is identified for this type of development on the future land use map, so it agrees with that. It is inside the urban growth, urban service boundary. It is connected to municipal services, so it's legitimate to annex this land at this time. And the proposed zoning accords with neighborhood commercial designation in the comprehensive plan. So the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board recommends approval of both the request to annex and to rezone to C2 Neighborhood Commercial District based on the findings in the staff report. And in your packet, there's two possible motions for you to consider. I couldn't fit them both on one screen, unfortunately, but...
That's okay.
Okay. And I would be happy to take any questions you have.
Could you just give a little background, John? I know most people know we considered this once before, but then there was at least one error in the, in the data, so can you go back and catch us up on that?
Yes, there was a procedural error, and that's been cured by the fact that we've gone through this again through the, to correct it. But the original notice misstated the extent of the rezoning. And when I first gotten the information or gotten the packet information, I think it was not clear to me, and so I made a mistake when I put together that notice. So the notice went to people within 200 feet of the extent of that whole area. It's just that it itself said, "We're rezoning 10.87 acres." And what was, what we were doing was annexing 10.7, 10.8 acres and rezoning a total of 27 some acres. We sent out a new one, and we held a hearing on April 1st before the planning board, and so we've started over again, and before you now.
Thank you. Any comments from anyone? That was really good, Karen.
Well, thank you.
I think the fact that we went through it one other time makes this one easier.
You ruined it. Anybody from the public have any comment on this item, either for the annex part or the zoning part? Seeing none, we'll come back to the commission. If there are no further comments, we entertain, first of all, a, a motion on the annexation.
I move we approve first reading of an ordinance annexing a 10.84-acre portion of Blueville Edition Unit 2, yet to be annexed, generally located southwest of the intersection of Anderson Avenue and Scenic Drive near Wildcat Creek Road based on the conformance with the Manhattan Urban Area Comprehensive Plan, the growth vision, and the capital improvements program, and based on the recommendations of the planning board. And should I go ahead with the second question?
Hold it first. You call the roll on the annexation.
I have to have a second.
Oh, I thought it hurt something.
Who's second?
Second.
Okay, good.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero.
I move we approve first reading of an ordinance rezoning a 2.4-acre portion of Blueville Edition Unit 2, generally located south of the intersection of Anderson Avenue and Scenic Drive from Riley County AG, Agriculture District, and C5 Highway Service Commercial District to C2 Neighborhood Shopping District and C5 Highway Service Commercial District based on the findings in the staff report and the recommendation of the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board, planning board twice.
Yusha, I think when you said that first line where it's 27.4 acre, you said 2.4. I don't know if it's, you don't call it a typo, but it's 27.4. Okay. Thank you.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay. Call the roll, please. Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero. Okay, there being no further business before the commission will be standing adjourned.